This is our opportunity to discuss the mid-year budget review. It was presented at our last school board meeting. So, Ms. Michael, you're on.
Thank you. At the last school board meeting, Mr. Moon, you had asked some additional information about school construction. So I thought if you wouldn't mind, I'll be happy to start there and then answer any other questions that people have on FY16. So when we look at the changes to the construction fund for FY16, the first is we're recognizing the final installment for the synthetic Tirth funds of 1.5 million from the county. They included that in their year-end agenda. We had included our 1.5 million in our year-end agenda with a caveat that we were expecting matching funds from the county, and they did include that. Secondly, the county did provide that funding of 13.1 million for the Joint Infrastructure Financing Committee. If you'll remember, that was originally included. We were anticipating it in their adopted budget for FY16, and it wasn't funded. But the county did make that funding commitment as part of their carryover review. So we are now recognizing that funding of 13.1 million. And then, of course, we're hopeful that we'll see that in their FY17 advertised budgets. We see that in the base budget moving forward. Then the last change in terms of the construction fund was we had increased the authorized but unissued bonds by $135.2 million after a conversation with the county in terms of that funding. So that change, what we're doing is we're recognizing bond premiums. And bond premiums result when the effective interest rate is lower than the coupon rate. So if the bonds are expected to sell, say for an interest rate of 2.5%, but we actually sell them at 2%, that difference is called bond premium. It doesn't impact how much money FCPS receives in total. We're still receiving only 155 million, right? So it's not impacting our total revenue. But when the revenue comes over, it's coming over both as that bond sale and then that bond premium, that portion that's resulting from that lower interest rate that's actually being charged. So there's no actual change. It's just showing that increase in our authorized but unissued bonds. This is something that has occurred every year going all the way back to 2003. And we had a discussion with the county just before this agenda, after year-end, asking them how they were incorporating that on their fund statements. So they asked us to do the same. So again, there's no change in our total funding available. It's just a change in how we present the information. So that's an update on the construction fund, and I would be very happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Moon?
Going back to the bond premium question, so for example, if you save or county as a whole, say with a half a percent, are expenses being reduced by that half a percent? So meaning that we have more money out of the 155 million to actually spend on construction?
There's more money coming in total. FCPS still only receives 155 million, but using that example of a half-
Please go slowly, more slowly than that.
Sure. So when we look, first, if we expect the interest rate to be 2.5% right on our bonds, and we sell bonds totaling 155 million, if that effective interest rate comes in at 2%, so if people are willing to pay us a premium, willing to, our bonds are good, and they're willing to pay us actually a lower interest rate to have our bonds, in that case of a 2% interest rate, the bond sale premium would be $38.8 million, right? So that would give the total bond sale proceeds of 193.8 million. So the 155 plus that additional, 38.8 million dollars. But the important thing is, the county is still only giving us the 155.
So where is that $38 million going then?
So where, what I would say is, what the county is doing is they're, I would think, they're looking at because they're getting a lower interest rate, right, they're able to generate a larger amount of money, but they're still looking at that total debt capacity and still giving us just the 155. But we'll be happy to ask the county any questions about why, when they're receiving a bond premium-
I'm asking Mrs. Smith and Mr. Storke, where is that $38 million going?
Correct. We're asking, when we get a bond premium, why aren't they passing that on to FCPS as additional revenue?
Thank you.
I think it's probably helping with their debt capacity. So, you know, I think we can request having that, those funds be transferred over to schools.
$38 million can be easily too elementary school renovations.
I believe that we do have an agreement where we can ask budget questions of the Board of Supervisors, and I think this would be an excellent budget question where we've recognized a bond premium so that the Board of Supervisors, it appears, are experiencing additional dollars for construction, and we would like to know how they're going to spend it.
I'll be happy to submit that question.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
I just, I had a question about, just want to make sure I understand, on page three of the attachment, the, it's B there, per pupil funding reduction. So what that means is that $334,000 less is going out to schools because, and so how is that affecting schools? I mean, what does that mean for them? Is that staffing or is that other money?
So this is just looking at the per pupil allocation that we provide to schools for textbooks and instructional supplies. And because our enrollment came in lower, we're recognizing that savings of $334,039. It comes out of the funding that we have available to help address enrollment growth for per pupil supplies.
Okay. So we're not actually taking money away from schools, just sending them that much less?
Correct.
Thanks.
Are there any other ques- yes?
So regarding the same issue, just kind of backing up and looking at, so we had less students than we projected, right? And we're showing nearly a $4 million reduction in the state aid because of the change in the daily enrollment. So why is it then that we're only showing the .3 million for the per pupil funding, which I understand now is just for supplies? But, you know, somehow there's a disconnect that's a little confusing. So can you kind of explain that?
Yeah. At the last work session last month, we provided a summary to the board that talked about enrollment variances and how they impact the budget, right? So it started to look at pieces like staffing. So we gave examples that talked about when we allocate staffing out to schools and when the actual enrollment comes in and how we make those adjustments. So we covered that at the last work session, and I'd be happy to reprovide that to anyone if we want to pass that copy out again. But when we look at this reduction item, as Chairman Hines pointed out, we don't reduce schools' allocations once we give them out to them in terms of per pupil supplies, but we do hold some per pupil funding back that allows us to allocate out additional funding if their enrollment growth comes in over. So for examples, as students start to, schools start to plan for their students in the upcoming year, if we went back after they had purchased their textbooks, it would be very difficult for us to take back funding when the enrollment comes in slightly below. So this is really looking at, it's about $160 per student for the 2,000 students.
However, just to add to that a little bit further, I know we discussed this last time, but it is important. We did talk at length about staffing reserve and any other savings as a result of not growing at the pace at which we have projected. And we indicated that we were going to recognize that at third quarter if we can at that point. We had, I think we reported that we have 70-something positions left in staffing reserve. So at, you know, at third quarter, we will definitely recognize that, and then we sum potentially at year-end as well. Is that correct?
That is correct. So when we look at the enrollment summary that appears on page five of the agenda, when we look at that enrollment summary, we currently have 76.8 positions left in the staffing reserve. We still have special ed staffing meetings coming up. We have one next week in special education, and we'll continue those through January. So we will report back to the board at third quarter in terms of how many positions are remaining in the staffing reserve, just as we do each year. We typically recognize those at a quarterly review near the end of the year. At the same time, we're also monitoring all of our other accounts, right? So depending on any variances we have in terms of health insurance, for example, with planned shifts for employees as of January, we'll report all of those adjustments to the board as we typically do at third quarter.
Ms. McLaughlin?
So wait, just to finish, to make sure I understand that, yeah, I was trying to understand the relationship between what looks like a disconnect and the staffing reserve. And so that is the connection. So I don't know if that's apparent to everybody, but that is a little confusing when you just look at the, what's on this, you know, on the screen, and you don't understand what's happening. But it sounds like come third quarter, that'll all be delineated. Because right now, it looks like, well, you know, you've claimed a reduction, you know, from the state, but then you haven't gone on the other side, and, you know, where'd that money go? On the paper, it doesn't answer that question, but I understand it now. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm where Ms. Reed is. The bottom line is, it's showing a deficit of 2,115 students. And typically, in a budget year, we say that another 2,000 students are going to cost us to spend another $20 million to educate. So we know that the state said, yep, we should recognize you 2,100 less, so you got $4 million not coming your way. But there's still then the 16 million that we typically say it's going to cost us to, you know, absorb those students. So $334,000 isn't the 16 million. So I understand now you're talking about the staffing reserve, but I still don't think it gets us to 16 million. So I would really appreciate, you know, whether it was covered in the prior work session or not, I would like to have an itemization that shows, you know, we budgeted the 20 million or whatever the exact figure it was, 2,100 didn't show up, and here's where the math is. I don't want to wait till third quarter or fourth quarter because honestly, I'm hearing from the public, and I know it's just around the corner to hear from the supervisors as well. How come you had 2,000 less students at $20 million, guys? You're on the school board, and you don't know where that money is? So if you list it out for us, at least I've got something to be able to speak to.
Sure. We provided at the Joint Board of Supervisors School Board Meeting last week the exact summary, not only of enrollment growth for this current year, right, but examples of how it's calculated as well as the reserve. So I'll be happy to go over some of it here if you would like, and certainly we can reprovide the document that we shared with the Board of Supervisors as well.
Well, I was at that meeting, and it's not ringing a bell with me that you walked me through the steps of, we built this into our budget, it was going to be about $20 million, and then here's how we don't have it now. So Mr. Storke's shaking his head, yes, I hope that means he's saying he understands what I'm asking.
Let's go through it again. Last work session, we actually spent quite a bit of time on this, but we're happy to do it, because this is, to talk about it again, this is an important subject. What we provided to the Board of Supervisors last week was the exact document that we provided to you all at the last work session, although we didn't go into it because no one seemed to want to go down that road. But we thought we would get that question, so we were prepared to answer that question. We calculate growth. Every year when we develop a budget, we calculate growth as to what it would really cost us. A lot of times in the public, people will just do basic math, and they'll say, okay, a student costs you $13,571. Every new student, you just multiply it by that, and that's your, it's not a basic math problem. And that's the challenge we have in helping people understand it. So on the flip side, what we do then is, as we work with schools right now and determining how much it's really costing us for this year, we're having to actually go to every school and figure out, okay, one student, one school had 10 less students than what we projected, because this is not about actual, this is about what we projected in the budget. We have to determine, did that really equate to one less teacher? Sometimes it didn't. Sometimes it might have, depending upon, so we have to go back and calculate it the opposite way. So that's why you won't find, and you typically don't get that analysis yet again until the third quarter. I will tell you, the other thing that you're going to get is, we, in February, I'm, excuse me, on January the 7th, when I present the budget, we also will project in there how much growth will cost. You'll see a big difference in that number this year because of what we're experiencing this year. So two things. We are calculating it to look at our real cost for this year, and as I just pointed out, we have to almost do it by school by school. And that will become to you in February and, is it February's third quarter? Yes, February's third quarter. But you'll also see an adjustment in the January proposed budget from the superintendent. If you want to add anything to that, Kristin. So we're not hiding any money, and it will be, we'll show our math as we move further in the year.
So if Ms. Michaels wants to add something to it, that's fine. I'll just clarify from what I heard Dr. Garza say, what my remaining concern is then.
Sure. So just briefly, our total cost of enrollment growth in FY16 was 22.1 million. But of that, when we look at teacher scale positions, they were 111.7 positions and 8.6 million, right? So as we're looking at this variance in enrollment, I want to point out that the variance that we're looking at to date is only our variance in general education, right? Our official enrollment count for special education, we will count in December, and then we still have the upcoming counts as well based on what's posted on the agenda. So when you walk through this, the document talks about how we calculate the cost of enrollment growth, and it provides examples for each school. Because just as Dr. Garza said, sometimes you can have an increase of five or even 10 students, and it doesn't generate another teacher. So in that case, we were able to add 10 students without any additional staff. But sometimes, and even as we've seen in these reserve adjustments this year, the increase of just one kindergarten student can sometimes trigger the requirement for an additional kindergarten teacher and an IA, because the state has hard caps there. So when we look at using the reserve, the reserve is our methodology for adjusting for any variances between our projected enrollment used in the budget and our actual enrollment. So in that premier workforce presentation in November, we walked through and talked about, of the reserve positions allocated, we showed where we took positions back from schools who didn't qualify for them. So we went back and looked at each school, and if they weren't generating enough students to maintain those teachers, we took those positions from schools and put them back in the reserve. And then we also showed the reserve allocations going back out to schools, both for formula, which is based on our enrollment formula, as well as the positions we had to allocate out to meet our new class size guidelines. So all of those documents were posted for our November work session.
I think one other key point to remember is, when we went through and evaluated the class sizes and actual enrollment projections, we also left positions in schools if they were within a teacher within five students, because we do have some hard caps, and we didn't want the, you know, pull the position, and then next month they qualify for position. So if the school was within five students, we'd left those positions in those schools to kind of address the fluctuations that we might have throughout the year. So even though the actual enrollment numbers for the system for general education came in 2,115, it doesn't necessarily mean that you could take that and divide it by a staffing ratio, and those are how many teachers that we should have had remaining. So it becomes very complex, because you've got to look at each school, each grade, each class separately.
Yeah, I think, I want to make sure we're clear on the staffing reserve first, because it's all about understanding the definitions. Staffing reserve is for teaching positions only. So as I remember, Dr. Garza, the way that we-
We also use it for instructional assistants-
Okay.
-and teachers.
Okay. But as I understand it, when the 22-point million that we originally thought it would cost for the new students, that is based on calculations for everyone that serves a school. So it can be your custodians, it can be your secretaries that serve the principals, it can be, and so, and that's been one of my pushbacks, that when we're looking at building a budget, and we're talking about absorbing new students, I get things like direct services, the teacher in the classroom, or the instructional aide, or making sure you have the appropriate guidance counselor numbers in the building. But you're not going to increase your principal if you end up taking new students, and assistant principals, maybe not so much either. So that, that's where I think this, this calculation of the 22 million has always been challenging for me to adopt. And now, in this situation we're in, yes, I very much appreciate that you're going to try to walk us through it. Dr. Garza, you did a great job explaining, you know, some of the complexities here. What I'm still wrestling with is, so we had 283 positions in the staffing reserve. There's 76.8 left. But we came in with 2,000 fewer students, so how did we even use-
I don't know if we had that handy, that chart, but we actually provided a chart in November that showed, because we put in a new requirement, a staffing cap, we actually spent more than what we had planned, or what we thought it would cost just to meet that new standard. So that was part of it, too.
That's excellent. And see, that's, that's the kind of data in like a one-page thing, like don't-
We have it, but we already have it done. It's the very last page on your premier workforce presentation, how the staffing reserves were used, and how many positions actually came back into the staffing reserve, and how many positions-
Right. But what I want is, so that I am prepared to speak to the supervisors and anybody else who asks me, because, Dr. Garza, you're correct, it's not about thinking you're hiding money, but I have to be able to explain where the money is, or people will say, you're not doing your job. So if you can get us the chart that walks us through, here's the 22 million we estimated, but here's how it played out, then that enables, because you're absolutely correct, we did something really good this year with honoring the community's request to say, you've got class sizes that are too high. And so in other words, we benefited as a system by fewer students came in, which enabled us to have funding to do the good work we needed to do, and we're still going to have a surplus, because it looks like we probably won't need to use all of these positions that are here, the 77 positions that are there. But I just think it's really important that something like this, where we get hit on, especially the supervisors and the public who can't understand sometimes this complexity, having it in that one-page sheet, data sheet, is really important.
Okay. I believe we can probably go back and pull it up, and then if you could res-
It's not what I'm asking.
Okay. Then if we can have that information, put that into next steps as to how it's used. Okay, Ms. Schultz?
There is that review section.
The last piece.
That's just not what I'm-
It was on the last page. And then if we could provide us a summary, Ms. Michael, of exactly what you told us, and put that together and send it out again. So, there it is. And if, as we ask for that information, I'd also like comparison on the staffing reserve. Give us, because I know we've talked about this other years about where we were in this time.
I do want to make sure something, though, because I think Ms. Strauss thinks I was asking for something differently. This is helpful, absolutely. But what I was saying is, it's, Ms. Strauss, it's a fact sheet that says, we thought we were going to have 2115 students at $22.1 million. We didn't. Here's what ended up happening with that money. And it's itemized down, showing, and you can pull this data from that chart to be part of the, what, the information I'm asking for, but I need to be able to say, this is why you're not seeing $22 million as a surplus.
We will, we will ask that your question is answered, and if you want more information, we'll continue to get more information. Okay? Ms. Schultz?
So it's difficult to have this part of the conversation, because it's so crystal clear to some. And it's, you know, it's the two Americas, you know? Something happens, and somebody says gun control, and somebody else says gun rights. The same information is presented, and it is being interpreted completely differently by people of reasonable intelligence, reasonable understanding, that you have 2,115 fewer students than expected, and you spent $22 million on them anyway. You know, there is a radical disconnect between, you know, some basic math here, and maybe this ties in very clearly to the conversation earlier today about projected versus actual, and show me where 2,115 students were expected, and where they didn't show up, in which schools, and somehow how we wound up spending $22 million on 2,115 students that didn't materialize.
Can we, wait, can I interrupt so that, so that we have a next steps question? In other words, does the 76.8 positions, is that money that's already spent, or is that money that, that is available to spend but not yet spent? Would that help with part of your question, Ms. Schultz?
If you're saying we have $22 million at our disposal that was for the student enrollment that we projected, and we told the supervisors, hey, we're going to have student enrollment growth. And our budget said, our student enrollment growth in our budget presentation to the supervisors and to Ed Long said, this is our student projection enrollment growth, and therefore we need more money to cover student enrollment growth. And if we don't, not only don't have that growth, but we actually retract even more than the, that growth, and still spend the $22 million, I think that unless we have a crystal-clear explanation for how you spend $22 million on over 2,100 students who don't materialize, we're going to be in trouble.
Okay. Then, as, as another budget question, we have 76.8 positions in the reserve. We need comparisons between other years on where we were at this time.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Strauss. It's not 76.8.
Okay. Can I, can I finish so that I get your-
No, actually, you can't, because it's my question, and it isn't 76.8 positions, because 76.8 positions is not $22 million.
Okay. Then your question is, where did the 22-
My question is, we expected 2,115 more students. Where did we expect those students? And how do we correlate spending $22 million for 2,115 students who didn't materialize in the places that we thought? Because we say the same thing when we use, when we take positions from the staffing reserve. So if there is a position from a staffing reserve, and for example, at XYZ Elementary School, there are 80 more students than we projected in May of last year. So 80 more students come in, you're going to have to create an additional third grade, an additional fourth grade, and you need three more aides, and what, all of a sudden, we're drawing from the staffing reserve because there were more students than expected. However, and Ms. Michael, you and I have had this conversation privately, so this is not unexpected. Similarly, in another school, there were 40 or 50 students who did not materialize. And in a school who did not materialize, in a year where we implemented a new policy that said, oh, by the way, if you overestimated, you don't get to keep the extra resources, a teacher, or two teachers, or three teachers were pulled back from schools where students didn't materialize. Therefore, the teachers that we quote-unquote "took" from the staffing reserve to fund the 80 additional teachers at that school are zeroed out from a net perspective, because you've pulled back the resources from other schools. And I'm assuming we didn't fire those teachers. So if we didn't fire those teachers, those teachers were redeployed to places where there were, in fact, teachers or students beyond our expectations. Therefore, there should be a lot of zeroing out of positions, because we had a lot of schools where students didn't materialize. The 2,115 students didn't materialize. So even if we did have schools that experienced growth, that we did need to dip into the staffing reserve, we still have ones where we're balancing out from the teachers that we pulled back from schools. So unless there is a comprehensive explanation for that, I can almost guarantee this is going to become the mainstay of the conversation, which is, we didn't project accurately, there's 2,115 students missing, and you still spent the 22 million.
Okay. So if you would like to-
I have to interrupt here.
Sure.
I will tell you that the question, this line of question is very important, so I'm not diminishing that. I think it's very important, though, for us to recognize that we have been an honest broker in any budget conversation that we've had, and we've been as transparent as we possibly can be, you know, today and into the future. And we will continue to do that. So if anyone feels like we're hiding anything or not showing our work, that is an absolute- an absolute misrepresentation of where we are.
Dr. Garza, I did not say that at all.
I know, I know, but I want, I want to be clear, just for anyone that might be listening. Now, we do know that in January, we'll have a better indication of what it really did cost, and I will be the first to admit right now, there will be some recognition of some savings in our budget. Will it be a full 22 million? No. Well, it won't be a full 22 million, but we fully recognize that at third quarter, we're going to be bringing back to you all some savings in our current budget, because we didn't grow at the proj- at the pace that we thought within our current budget, but also within that staffing reserve, because it's both, which is what you were pointing out. It's both. The third piece is, we're going to actually be able to show, I believe, in the fiscal year 17 proposed budget, a reduction there, because we have to recalibrate our budget moving forward in 17 for the fact that we had planned for a 22 million dollar increase in, in student costs. That goes into ongoing budget. We will have to recalibrate that. And so you will see that we're working on that behind the scenes right now. So I think that, I, I get the level of discomfort. I know we have to have a good answer to that. It's just too early, and we will have an answer to it.
And I, I understand all of that, Dr. Garza, and, and there was nothing in what I said that we were not an honest broker. What I said was, going forward, this is going to be a mainstay of the conversation, which is, you, the FCPS, staff, board, whomever, projected 2,115 more students in your budget ask this spring. In September, those students did not materialize, and yet we're already saying, quote-unquote, we've spent the money.
So, no, 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 we didn't. No, we didn't. Let me be very clear. No, we didn't.
In our, in our previous conversation, let me, let me be clear, in my previous conversation with Krista, with Ms. Michael, but 76 positions is not 22 million. I, I don't know what it is, because I don't know what those positions are, but if you figure 50, $60,000 a position, it's a lot less than 22 million. So the, the, the ability for us to clearly communicate and why we need from September 8th until the end of December or January to do a special education count, I can't begin to imagine. We can certainly come up with a preliminary number, then revise it and, and, and enhance it as children's 504s or IEPs get, expire or get renewed, or they get qualified for new ones. But we should, at this point, at, you know, the first week of December, have a, a working number of what our special education student population is. So we, we do not have what I would consider, and, you know, others may agree or disagree with me, but we do not have a navigable document, whether it's text, graphs, pict-, infographics, whatever it is, around the explanation of how we started with a budget, you know, in May, that by September had not materialized, and we don't have a clear explanation of fitting, you know, part A into part B at, at this point. And that, that hobbles us in the conversation where there are already recommendations out there on adding sports fees or adding, you know, whatever.
Okay, in our, since we have other people that also have questions, may I ask you to ask a very specific budget question, and we will put it through and answer it?
I, I don't think I should have to ask a budget question. I think that we-
No, well, I know, but you're, you're, you're concerned that we understand exactly what you're asking for, so I'm simply asking you to submit exactly what you're answer, what you are asking for, and then it will get answered with the information that is available. Is that fair?
Um, I, I, I think this should be provide, I mean, as a matter of, as a matter of course, you know, having to submit a budget, budget question to get the basic budget explanation of where those 2,115 students were expected, where they didn't materialize, and what money has been spent-
Yes, okay.
-out of the 22 million, and what's expected to remain.
Ask your specific question in fairness. So, that's fine. And then we will get the specific answer. Okay. I have Ms. Evans, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. Hines.
Well, first of all, I want to say, I really appreciate this conversation, because I think it's, it's important, and for those of you who deal with this every day, every year, you know, it's, it's probably very obvious, but to those of us who don't, I think it was really important. I did not hear Dr. Garza say that we had spent it, that we are going to hear at third quarter. We're going to hear at third quarter the answer to those questions, because we're going to go in and look at with great detail about exactly where the 2, 2,100 did not show up, and we need to calculate it. We absolutely do need to calculate it. We don't have it yet, you know, but I, I think getting it at third quarter is just fine. So I very much appreciate the conversation, because on this document, if you just look at this cold, you could say, well, wait a minute, we lost 4 million from the state, but where's the other half of it? So good, I'm, I, you know, I appreciate the amount of time spent on it. And I did have, my, my questions were about the state. So we've lost 4 million dollars because of the reduction based on our September 30 figure. If we get an influx of students in the spring, as we do at some schools, do we get more state money? Do we, is there another calculation, and do we, we, we get more state money?
So the way the state calculates their state aid that's provided to FCPS, it's based on what they project our average daily membership will be for March, for the upcoming spring, for March.
Oh.
So what we did is, we looked at where our enrollment is currently, as compared to what the state compared us for March, and we believe when we get our average daily membership in March, that it's going to be lower than the state projected. So because they're going to adjust that state aid to us in the June payment, based on that final ADM or average daily membership in March, they're going to true us up, so we want to recognize that now, because we can't get to June and suddenly be short state revenue.
So just to be sure I'm clear, based on the September 30, our September 30 figures, we are projecting what they will find in March?
That is correct. And it's average daily membership for the entire school year.
Okay, all right. Well, that's interesting. So then the other thing I wanted to note, do they take into account in what they give us FRM and ESOL in terms of the, the mix of students? So in other words, if, if, if we have a lower number of students, but a higher percent of ESOL, a lower number of students, but a higher percent of free and reduced lunch, does that help to offset, or is it completely irrelevant to what they give us?
So this calculation that we're looking at here is solely based on our average daily membership.
Yeah.
That's the item that they'll recalculate when they look at the total. The state does provide us funding for ESOL, but this is just really, they're going to base that per pupil allocation in basic aid, using that ADM or that average daily membership.
So they do give us ESOL money, but that's separate?
It's separate from this calculation that we're looking at. This is our basic aid per pupil.
Okay, and I, I, I'm asking for a reason. It, it came to my attention recently that at one of my schools, the FRM calculation in, at September 30th was significantly lower than the June calculation, that it was, it was, it was significantly under reality. And there may be any number of reasons for that number being different, and I'm, I'm just wondering if we are losing state money because of that. You see what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying. It could be, they're going to base their calculation, so let's say we're looking at state aid for reduced class size in K to three. They're going to base that allocation for this current school year, based on their census count from last February 1st.
Okay.
Right, so, so the state is going to base calculations depending on specific points in time and when that official enrollment count is. So the state's official enrollment count for special education is December, for general education, it's September 30th. They use FRM data. It's, it's audited data as of February 1st. So it's all going to depend when that data poll date is.
Okay. I, I will follow up with a specific question on that, because that, that can make a difference, I think. Thank you. Mr. Velkoff?
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. One of our strategic goals is a caring culture. This is something that we embrace, because I know all 12 of us have felt that the organization needs some renewal. The caring culture does not start with the superintendent and go down. Starts with the school board. We have a responsibility. Ms. McLaughlin, I, I, I might like it if you heard this. The caring culture begins with us. We have to model that. I challenge anyone who's out there in the audience, or anybody who comes in later and watches the tape, if they heard the remarks from the Braddock representative and the Springfield representative as being consistent with a caring culture. You have to remember, we have a very talented staff here, and just as earlier, we were talking about teachers wanting to come back to work. We want to make sure these people come back to work. And frankly, I'd have a, I'd be questioning whether I have to listen to this kind of stuff if I'm come to work. So I think we all ought to think hard about this. All right, having gotten that off my chest. I also want to say that you have to start by listening to what people are telling us, and read the materials that they've already prepared. And some of the questions persisted despite the fact that these things were explained, and the source of information was made available. Now, to the particulars of the problem, here's what I understand. We have allocated a certain amount of money that goes throughout the schools. The issue here is one of, if I understand this correctly, so Ms. Michael, please correct me, it's kind of an issue of rounding error, because as been, as has been pointed out, you can't just add up all the number of positions and all the money and just say, well, we don't spend it, because it depends on the impact at individual schools. So here's a diagram, okay? Here's two schools. In one school, okay, this line here I'm indicating is the bar for when we hire or don't hire a teacher. In both schools, enrollment went down. In this one, it went down below that threshold, in which case this school doesn't require a teacher. In the other case, it went down, but it didn't hit that threshold, and so there is not a savings of a teacher at this school. What you have to do is you have to go through this times 200 schools in the county to figure out how many positions were actually saved. That is what they're telling us. That is what they are telling us.
Ms. Hines?
She's next.
Thank you.
Um, just, not to drag it all up again, but just a quick question, I hope, about the reason maybe why we wait till third quarter for some of the staffing numbers to settle down, is my understanding that we hire out of the staffing reserve until or through February? Is that typical?
That is correct.
Okay, and we do that, I mean, then we get to a point, February-ish, where we're, you know, more than halfway through the school year, so we're really looking at long-term subs at that point. So that's, that's why, probably why these things don't really settle down to a point where we can report them fully with confidence until more like third quarter, as I understand it.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions from people who have not yet spoken? Okay, I have a couple of questions before we go to a go-back. Turnover and vacancy rate, when do we actually take a look at how that is going? It's obviously way too early now, but when do we get that?
We do every month monitor all of our expenditures, looking both at, when we think of our compensation and checking that turnover, we really do want to wait and analyze our compensation accounts after January, when all of our employees have had their health plan shifts, right? We also want to watch as we're continuing, we've had vacancies longer this school year than typically we would have at the beginning of the year. So we're analyzing all of that data, right? And our hope is that after we get past January, we'll be more confident projecting where we'll be at the end of the year.
Okay, and for preschool, special education, do we admit children during the year? In other words, our two-and-a-half-year-old, and consequently, and these are often our highest need children, so are we not only forming new classrooms as needed as they are identified through Childfind, and then are we also hiring teachers and an autism ABA, et cetera, which is very expensive?
Correct. So for special education, we're required to serve those students. So as additional children are found eligible and come to us, we do need to serve them. So it frequently does mean adding additional classrooms and making those adjustments, and we'll continue to do that all the way through February.
Right.
Right, after that, we will switch to long-term subs.
Right. And then the other question is, the year-round special education services, which is again a, a cost driver, students who are eligible for year-round, which is the summer program as well, which is a 12-month service. At what time in the, in the year does that settle down for ESY services? I guess that would be Dr. Lipp's question? Because that, the, those, those monies are, I mean, we have to spend them. When does that settle down?
Yes, we do. Normally, most of our students have those services in the summer time.
Right, but when do we, when does that projection settle down?
Um, it's really done all year long, depending on the decisions of the IEP team.
So again, your two-and-a-half, three-and-a-half-year-old, because those are very expensive services, and those are protected by federal law.
Correct.
So that is on a month-by-month-
Correct.
...requirement.
And you are correct in talking about those students who are newly found eligible, and also many students moving into our system who come in with IEPs that we have to honor.
Right.
So that involves some of the staffing that you see up there.
So Childfind is a 12-month process.
Yes.
I had one more question. Oh, and as, as we are trying to sort out the enrollment, could we have a five, at least a five-year look back, perhaps an interesting 10-year simple look back on staffing reserve, because we have had some, and this is a budget question that is asked every year. We have some years where money is returned, pushed forward, and used in the next year. We have had other years where we've had to go into the 8 million dollar reserve, because we were short, and it would be good to see that trend, as we've just looked at CIP, and nervous as to what is a trend, what is a blip, how do we plan for this?
Just in recent years, last year, we actually had to go out to schools and ask principals to give us positions they hadn't filled, because we exhausted the staffing reserve just last school year.
Right.
The year before, we actually returned 14 positions to the board at third quarter, I believe. We had about 14 positions we didn't fill. Certainly, that trend, we'll probably many more than 14 this year, but every year is kind of different. But last year, we, we had to go back to schools, because we exhausted it.
Right, and it would be interesting to see the trend, because it's, as well, we attempt to estimate that every year, it is, it is always difficult. Okay, and then I see one go-back. Ms. McLaughlin?
In the prior work session, I had to do a go-back to restate the line of question I'd asked, because it was misrepresented in terms of what I was asking. And regrettably, the same thing has happened. I am shocked and dismayed that one of my colleagues would imply that I don't know what caring culture means, and that I have been rude or disrespectful. I very much appreciated that in the serious line of questioning that I asked about the 22 million dollars, both Ms. Michael, Ms. Quinn, and Dr. Garza were very forthcoming in explaining that while the document hasn't been provided to us, in what I was hoping to understand, which is the 22 million and the 2,000 students, they will go ahead and pull that information together, because it's in various spots right now, and it will enable me to better represent both Braddock and Fairfax County Public Schools. To listen to a colleague berate me and misrepresent me as if I'm being rude to our superintendent is completely unjustified. And I cannot convey how disappointing it is after four years to yet again feel like I have a hall monitor trying to tell me how to behave. If you don't like my line of questioning, that's fine, but you don't get an opportunity to speak for other people, which Dr. Garza leads one of the largest school systems in the country. If she was concerned with my line of questioning, I do actually believe she would be the professional be able to say, Megan, I'm not sure I understand what your confusion is. So, Mr. Velkoff, very disappointed that you chose to take that tactic today.
Okay, I believe, are there any other budget-specific questions to be asked? Can we take a look at the next steps, then, to make sure that we have?
And as you're going through the next steps, I would like to remind the board and the newly elected board members and the audience, that we do have budget toolkits for FY '17, and we'll be dropping them off with your EAAs this week. So you'll get your typical budget toolkit. We have went ahead and pre-filled some items in the toolkit for you, including the Budget Task Force Report and the WABE Guide, but we'll get those to you this week.
Great, thank you. So, next step, submit budget questions. Where do supervisors ask how bond proceeds? Provide documentation sharing how variance in enrollment impacted the budget, comparing staffing reserves, year-end special ed- the budget, comparing staffing reserves, year-end special at what time in year... Yeah, I think that got canceled. Okay.
So, so I think she's asking for a historical usage, or a historical report on staffing reserve usage.
On staffing reserve, when, yes, a historical comparison of staffing reserve, i.e. when, when, when were positions and funds returned to the budget for use in the next year? And when were funds, additional funds requested during the budget year out of the reserve in order to meet an unanticipated growth in staffing? Okay? When were additional funds requested during the, the current budget year to satisfy unexpected growth? Okay? And then I have one more question to ask of the Board of Supervisors. Okay, one more question, because we've already, we have a, another budget question for the Board of Supervisors.
Does that actually capture that question, Mrs. Strauss? I think-
Historical comparison. Well, maybe you're a wordsmith there as a journalist.
Well, I think, I think, I think it's one, I think we know what we mean by this, but I think if we come back to it, we won't. Mr. Moon's question was a little more specific than that, as to how bond proceeds are distributed. Mr. Moon, would you like to help me out on this?
We need to add the word premium, so bond premium proceeds.
Oh, okay. And do we want to reference the $38 million, or, you know?
Are distributed and-
Right. Okay. Okay, say that, say that a little louder so we get it.
So we'll want to add, and how the $38 million received in bond premiums were allocated.
Yes. Is that better? Okay. And then I have another question submitted to the Board of Supervisors. I want to know what their projected turnover and vacancy rate is and when way, when they will announce a base adjustment based on their turnover, their actual turnover and vacancy rate experience. And when will that base adjustment be announced? Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Are they worded in such a way that everybody is okay? All right. Thank you very much. This part of the work session is adjourned, and then we will have informational meeting from audit. Thanks.